Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Leamester Planning Board Meeting. Okay. Elizabeth, you can read the governor's thing.
Okay. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, and the Governor's August 11th, 2020 COVID-19 Order Number 46, this meeting of the Leamester, of the City of Leamester Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible.
Okay, thank you. Chris, we have scheduled public hearing.
Do we want to do a roll call just to see who's online?
Um, yeah, we get a good idea.
Zoom meeting?
Roll call, please.
Jason Parre?
Here.
Dean Valier?
Here.
Patrick Perla?
Here.
Paul Weiser?
Here.
Tom Carrigan?
Yeah.
Sal Chikari?
Yeah.
Carol Vittoriosa?
Here.
John Siza?
Yes. I will, okay? Good. 6:30. Open the, continue public hearing for definitive subdivision approval for Mary Avenue Extension, 1157 Ria Main Street. Read notice to abutment by the post office and in the newspaper, okay? Mary Avenue, do we have representatives?
Uh, yes, my name is Anthony Cleese, I'm with Whitman and Bingham Associates, um, here on behalf of James Exares, the property owner. And, um...
Turn up his volume a little bit.
Okay, so did you, did you get that, Anthony Cleese, Whitman and Bingham?
Yeah, I can hear Anthony, but it's very light.
Okay.
Go on, check your volume, I can hear him pretty good, actually. But you're, you're a machine.
Yeah, okay, well, I got mine all the way up.
All right, I'm just curious.
Okay.
Loud and clear in North Leamester.
Loud and clear.
My problem was I can hear Sal, that's all right.
There you go, that is the problem.
Glad, Anthony, give us a scoop.
Sure, and, uh, this is, um, it's, I haven't had the pleasure to be before this board in quite some time, um, pre-Zoom protocols. Um, is there a plan that, um, Elizabeth, you want to put up, or do I share my screen?
I can either put up the, I can put up the plan for you, or you can take over as host, and you can show your screen. So you tell me what you want to do. I have Google Drive here, and, um... I have the agenda pulled up right now, but I can pull up the, um, plan.
Um, I guess I would, I would start with the colored plan. Um, might be easier for everyone to, to kind of seal the busy line work that we tend to put on all of our plans.
If he's on the phone, Elizabeth, you can't make him host.
Okay, what page do you want?
So it was a separate, it was a separate plan I had emailed you? Because if it's easier, I can, I can request...
I'm gonna look up my email, I have it.
So I guess while we're, we're waiting on that, I'm sure you, you have all seen this hearing on the agenda for quite some time. Um, so the, the update on that is, if you recall, what we're waiting for is that there was, um, we had filed with the Conservation Commission, um, concurrently with filing with the Planning Board last year. And during their proceedings and review of the site, there was an area within the project that needed some further identification and further evaluation. And so through various things that took place, it did take quite a long time, but we have gotten through that process with the Conservation Commission. At their, uh, last meeting, they did vote to issue an order of conditions, um, for the project. Uh, we haven't received that yet, but they have closed their hearings, and we've completed that process with the Conservation Commission.
Anthony, just real quick, I'm not finding it in my email, do you want to resend it, and then I'll open it up? The only one of plan I'm finding is the October 13th, 2020 plan that I have up.
Elizabeth, go to the second page. It'll show a little more detail, the next page. It shows the wetlands and stuff.
The one before that, right?
Well, we can work on that. This is going to start with too, John. Um, so that, um, that wetland I was just referring to is, um, it's a circular shape, uh, just behind an existing house on Penny Lane, um, an isolated wetland there, that, that hadn't been previously identified in the original subdivision applications. Um, and so that was the area in question, in that, um, we've since added that to the plans, been delineated, and as it does fall within the majority of the project, as you'll see in, in multi, in further sheets, there we go, um, we are proposing to fill that in with some replication area in the back, which we can, we can get to. But, um, so we've, we've gone through that process, we're, we're on the same page with the Conservation Commission. Again, they've issued, or they voted to issue an order of conditions. Um, it's in the process of, of being, uh, put together.
Anthony, is that all within, is that all within the red buffer? Can you, can you arrow it for us? I mean, I, I'm looking at it, and I think I know what it is, but can you just arrow it for us?
Yep, so we got, uh, so we have in, in, in orange are the boundaries of the wetlands. So you have the boundary in the rear, um, which was always, that hasn't changed. And then if you come down a little bit, there's like a circular orange, kind of in the cul-de-sac, right? Yep, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the area that was added, um, an isolated wetland, so non-jurisdictional, as it's not a boring, vegetated wetland, but, um, we're replicating that entire area nonetheless, um, out in the further, uh, rear of the property. So that was the area that was added.
And, and show us that, please.
The replication area?
Yep.
So that's gonna be, um, on another sheet, um...
Oh, okay, but I mean, just, just whereabouts, can you give us a rough estimate?
Sure, so if you, if you see that, uh, it has parcel A, 2.252 acres, not a building lot at the top of the page.
Yep.
So even further back, up the page from that, so it's really way out in the rear. Uh, we had our wetland scientists kind of walk the site, and there's, there's a decent amount of wetlands back there, but also made a great area, there are some uplands, so it made a great area for replication. It's gonna really, should take really nice, um, good spot for it, um, and so that's, and we, we'll see that on another sheet too, but that, so it's, it's way out in the back land, um, of the property.
It's graded correctly to fill it, right? I mean, on a...
Yep. Yep, so we're gonna, we're gonna grade, we're gonna actually excavate out for the replication area, so it, it takes well with the adjacent wetlands, uh, for that, that's further out in the back. So in this part here, um, to kind of refresh everyone's memory, and maybe some of the members that weren't, um, on the board at the time, we have a proposed three-lot subdivision, um, at, off of the end of, of Mary Ave. Um, to familiarize, yeah, good, thank you, um, this is, is located in North Leamester, off of, off of Main Street. Um, if, if you're familiar with Main Street, kind of heading, heading north, uh, before you get to, um, four corners, um, you're gonna have Bella Villa Ave on your right, and that, you can see that there on the top of the page. You would take a right down Bella Villa, and then you come to intersection, that's Mary Ave. Mary Ave continues to the left, uh, subdivision that way, and then a little portion to the right, and then Penny Lane, which is also, um, developed for a portion, then continues, uh, down that way. So we're, we're proposing to build off of that southerly end of Mary Avenue. Proposing a, a small cul-de-sac to access three new residential lots. Uh, this area is all zoned Residence A, with, so we have a 21,780 square foot minimum area, which we have, uh, each lot has that sufficient area and, and, and the 80 feet of frontage. Uh, we meet all those requirements as, as well. And then, so, Elizabeth, if you don't mind going back to the colored plan, please? Great, yes, thank you. Um, so, um, in, in gray, we've colored, kind of proposed pavement, so we have roadway coming in, cul-de-sac, driveways off of that, three single-family homes. Uh, subdivision is proposed to be serviced by municipal water and sewer. Um, the, the royal blue line is the proposed water main extension. There is water main in Mary Ave and Penny Lane, so we're proposing to extend that into the subdivision, uh, with a hydrant at the end. Water service is off of that to each individual home. In purple is the proposed, uh, sewer. This, this area, Mary Ave, Penny Lane, Bella Villa, you can kind of see in light gray, multiple lines on Mary Avenue and Penny Lane and Bella Villa, really tight lines together. Those are all individual force mains for all of the homeowners in this area. There is no gravity sewer system in Penny Lane or in this section of, of Mary Ave. So the purple lines, which we've shown, um, we're proposing a similar, um, instance with, uh, pumps for each house, but instead of tying into the spaghetti that exists in Bella Villa and Mary Ave, we're proposing to send these three-fourth mains, um, up through an easement of House 1157 Main Street, which is towards the bottom of this plan. If you don't mind scrolling so we can see the bottom a little more, Elizabeth, please, yeah, thank you. And then proposing a manhole, and then a gravity connection to the gravity system in Main Street. So that's, that's how we're proposing the sewer system there. And, um, stormwater system, uh, typical con, uh, conventional catch basin to manhole configuration, and this is in cyan on the plan. We have a couple catch basins, or one catch basin where all the water would go to, and, um, another catch basin, kind of on the south side of the road, in, in front of Lot 1. And then those would tie together, and then get piped to the stormwater basin, uh, to the rear of the project, uh, top of page. Um, it would go through four bay, typical four bay, and then infiltrate into the ground in that area with, um, a, a pipe above the bottom that would discharge to the rear and into the wetlands, um, in the rear of the property.
Anthony, any, uh, any, I mean, how did DPW feel about the, uh, you know, the ejector pumps, you know, forcing into the, uh, main to be gravity fed, is there any issues with that?
Yeah, no, great, great lead in, uh, to where I was, I was going next. We had some department comments, um, as part of the process originally, um, and they had some comments in the preliminary as well, and, um, so they were fine with, with the pump situations. I think it's, it's much better than tying into Mary Ave and Penny Lane. Um, and so the one comment that they had in, in their, one of the comments that they had in their review was, um, to, um, we had originally shown the connection manhole actually in the right-of-way of Main Street. And so they would, they wanted that manhole to be off of Main Street, because essentially that's, this is all gonna be, these individual sewer connections would be private. As they are three individual pipes, they don't tie together until you get to Main Street, those would be considered individual connections and not the responsibility of the City of Leamester.
The homeowner, the homeowner will know that, correct?
Exactly, yeah, so these, these would just be like a connection, um, that you would have. Um, a little different than subdivision, you may remember, um, Woodlands of Massapawg. We had a similar instance where, um, off of Dale Ave, we had no real sewer available, gravity, so... But in that one, we had a common force main. And City of Leamester Sewer Ordinance says, if you have more than one connection tied together, it becomes a ma, a sewer main. Um, and so in that instance, we had to do a main on private property, and then there was a homeowners association that, that owned, owned that main, and then when it tied into the manhole in the street, went back to gravity, then it's the city sewer system. So, uh, the long-winded version, sorry about that, but th, those three connections would all be individual privately owned, gets to that manhole, and then gravity to the street, um, that would be the, the city's, uh, portion there.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. And so, um, that was one of the DPW's com, we can get into the, the comments if you'd like, um, whoever...
No, we got time for that, yeah, go ahead.
So, um, and that's really the, the, the brief overview of, of the project. Uh, we have multiple waivers that we're asking for, which, again, you can let us know how you want to proceed with the rest of the hearings, go through waivers, comments, or if you have questions, uh, please, please feel free.
Well, we'll go through it, and then you will hit the, hit the waivers. See if anybody's got any more questions on the general meeting. Okay? Anthony, anything else you want to add?
No, and that, that pretty much, you know, is a, a brief summary, like I said, you know, some waivers to discuss, and, and probably most of it would just be questions from the board in public.
Okay. Good. Do I have any, um, any comments or questions of the board members? Any additional questions?
I'm good for now.
You had the full drawing, we got the drawing sets. Do I have, uh, open it up to, uh, audience, do we have anyone out there that's, uh, that wishes to speak? I'll ask one more, another time. Do I have anyone on that wishes to speak? Elizabeth, do we have anyone else out there that, uh... Would be a visitor?
I had, I had one citizen email me and ask for a copy of the plans, but I don't see that citizen attending the meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
They were all notified, though.
I don't see everybody on here, so... I didn't see it, so, okay, I want to make it covered. Anthony, you want to go through the waivers, please?
Sure. Um, and if I can actually, I, I'll just back up, um, for a minute, um, regarding neighbors. I wasn't sure there's any neighbors here. Um, two neighbors that were, came to many of the conservation meetings through the process. Um, one, um, was the property owner at 9 Penny Lane, which is, um, the house that most of the subdivision is right behind. Um, so, um, our wetland agent was working with him, because there's some other conservation-related items to take care of his property. So we've been, been working with him, and on the plan, uh, we are proposing to tie in one of his foundation drains into the catch basin of the project, so that, that is shown going through the cul-de-sac, um, tying into a catch basin, so that's right on the plan, uh, we addressed that. That was always shown on there, but one addition to this plan that wasn't on the original is, um, regarding the property of, I think it's 11 Bella Villa, I can't see. So it's at the corner of Mary Ave in, in Bella Villa, yes, 11. It's, um, currently owned by William and Paula Kia. The, when we first started this, it was a different property owner. And he would come to every meeting, and he was concerned with his foundation drain, because he thought his foundation drain daylighted somewhere in the area of our project. So another cyan line, if you want to zoom in just for a minute, please, Elizabeth, you can just zoom straight in, and we'll see that other cyan line. Yep, so if you, if you can kind of see it coming out of the existing house, uh, at the corner of Mary, Penny, and Bella Villa, 11 Bella Villa Ave, there's a cyan line showing coming out of his house, and then we're showing it coming down the road, exactly. Coming down the road to the right, and then tying into a catch basin. So, um, I had promised him after the meetings, um, that we would, we would take care of that for him. We just never had the, a chance to revise the plan to show him, and he since sold his property. But, um, we kept that on there, well, I wanted to make sure that was, that was accounted for, um, so the contractor knows we're gonna be picking up that sub-drain and tying it into our system, so...
Anthony, and then, so you've notified the new owner on that, and also, was it because they were experiencing water problems?
No, he, he just, he, he told me... Yeah, he told me his foundation drain, it probably shouldn't have, um, kind of goes off his property into Mary Ave. He didn't know exactly where it was. So I said, geez, you know what, we'll probably hit it during construction. I'll show it, a line on the plan, so it's accounted for, so people know, um, that when they hit it, we're gonna, we're just tied in. Pretty simple, um, to do that, but, uh, I always promised them...
And even if you don't hit it, you're gonna tie it in anyway, correct?
Yeah, if we see it, yeah, because if we go through it, with, there should be, if we don't hit it, then it's probably gonna operate fine, where, if it's somewhere else. But, um, he made it seem like it was right where our road was gonna go in, and we're cutting the road, so, um, we should find it pretty easily. But he, every meeting he would ask, and I said, oh, I promise it'll be on there, so it's too bad he's not here, because, um, it's on the plan for him. Um, but okay, I digress. So, um, we'll go through the, the waiver list. Um, section, I can, do you want me to read each section number, or you want me to just tell you what they are? I can make it very formal.
Make it formally, Anthony, we're, I mean, I've got the paper in front of me, but I don't know if...
Okay.
...who's listening does.
Sure. Uh, Section, uh, H2B1I Soil Evaluation and Percolation Tests. Um, due to the, the small number of lots, and as this is proposed to tie into municipal sewer, we're asking, um, to not perform soil tests on each individual lot. That's standard with a septic system project. Um, although we did do soil testing in the area of the stormwater basin, and that was witnessed by the DPW. Um, so we did do that, but we're just asking for a waiver on the soil testing for each lot. Um, Section 8.2E1E, finished invert elevations for the storm drains and sanitary sewers at 50-foot intervals. We've always asked for that waiver, um, that was more of a standard requirement back before the days of computers for drafting plans, where you'd have elevations every 50 feet to aid in construction, so we've, we haven't done that in, in years. Um, sidewalks, uh, due to the small number of lots and the lack of adjacent sidewalks existing, um, on, on Bella Villa or the section of Mary Ave and Penny Lane, we're just asking for waivers on the sidewalks. Street trees, um, we're, we're asking for, I guess you still call it a waiver, we're still showing street trees, but we're showing them outside of the right-of-way. Um, our understanding is, some of the thought process, at least from the DPW's standpoint, has changed on street trees, where they prefer the street trees to be outside of the right-of-way, to get away from the city...
12 of them, Anthony?
That's where they should be.
Um, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, yep. And the zoning was actually changed, um, for, I think it was non-commercial developments, and that, that, that line was stricken from the zoning that said, must be in the right-of-way. So we're showing show tr, street trees, but per kind of DPW, um, request, we're showing them outside of the right-of-way. But technically, the subdivision regulations still say, um, to be in the right-of-way. But we're again, we're still proposing, and we're not asking to get rid of the street trees.
Yeah, okay, just relocate it, and that's all.
Yep, exactly. Um, cul-de-sac plantings, asking for waiver for 9M12 on cul-de-sac plantings. Um, for, that's for improved snow plowability, um, yeah, we didn't, we didn't put the planting in the middle of the cul-de-sac. Again, um, I think DPW prefers that, and, and many people plowing prefer to avoid those. Uh, 9R1A3C, which is the street length requirement, that no street length should be longer than 500 feet. So although this proposed, uh, road is only 245 feet long, when you actually look at the total length of a connecting street, um, which would be Main Street, because this is essentially one long dead end from Main Street, Main Street's the only way in, um, the total length from Main Street is 635 feet, uh, when you look at it, uh, in that fashion. So we tried to look at it conservatively in that way. Um, so greater than 500, for reference, the existing Mary Ave to the north, left-hand side of the page, is 890 feet long, and Penny Lane to its end is 770 feet. So we're, we're less than those existing surrounding streets. Section 9R7, uh, which is coinciding the roadway and right-of-way center line. Um, so typically, you have your, your roadway and your right-of-way match up. Um, in, in this section here, we have the roadway a little bit angled away from the abutting lot of, of number 11 Bella Villa. Um, you can kind of see that, how Mary Ave line is kind of straight across the page, but the gray pavement kind of angles away, if you can see that a little bit. Um, yep, to the left of that hand a little bit. So reason for that is, um, this, uh, this property of 11 Bella Villa, they have a pool right near their property line, there's a, uh, they have a chain-link fence around their property line, and some, and some grass there. So we're really trying, we're trying to pull this road as far away from the property as possible to limit a steep slope and, and grain that might impact that neighbor. So that's why we tried to angle the roadway away from that Mary Ave existing sideline. So it, it's like, it's a little, it's a little off-center line there, but we wanted to try and, um, make it work as best we can with that existing property. Um, Section, uh, 9R12A, right-of-way width of 50 feet. The existing right-of-way of Mary Ave and, and Penny Lane is 40, so we're staying consistent with that, that 40-foot right-of-way. Section 9R12A, travel-away width of 34 feet, we're proposing a width of 28 feet. Um, the existing Mary Ave, which is, is dimensioned on there, is also 28 feet, and, uh, Penny Lane, um, it goes from 28 to 24, and then Penny Lane is about, um, 22 in some spot. So consistent or better than the existing roads that we're connecting to. Uh, Section 9R14F1 is another section that refers to sidewalks, so it's just asking for that waiver through a separate section. 9R14H, which is a grass strip. Um, an eight-foot grass strip is, is required. The proposed width here is, is six feet to be consistent with the existing width of Mary Ave and Penny Lane. Um, that's just due to the right-of-way being smaller, you don't have enough, uh, room left over with your, um, after you have your roadway in to have eight-foot, uh, grass strip. So it's, we have in six. Section 9R14L5B, which is eight-inch minimum-sized water mains. Due to the small number of lots, we proposed a six-inch water main, and we had gone over that with the DPW in the early stages, and, um, they were, they were fine with the small number of lots and the small section to, to have that. And they did not have a comment, and there was no comment.
Fire Department okay with that? And what pressure to have hydrant?
There, there was nothing in their comments, uh, on that. You know, a six-inch is sufficient for a hydrant, most, uh, all hydrant branches are six-inch. Um, it's a, it's a short section, but there was no comment from the DPW or fire in their comments for that.
Okay.
Uh, Section 9R14S6, uh, open space buffer area of 20 feet, uh, along all adjacent properties to the subdivision. Areas should be planted with suitable shrubs to create a visual and sound barrier between the subdivision and surrounding properties. Um, so that, the, the southerly and easterly boundaries of the property, of the adjacent, um, properties are all wooded. Um, there's no, no houses anywhere near those. Um, the closest houses are, are the ones that you can see here on this plan. We're not really clearing any trees for this project. Right now, this is a, an open field. There are some trees to the rear, um, where the detention basin or a stormwater basin is gonna go. That's really the only area that, that trees will be coming down. Um, so we're not really, um, taking away any, any buffer, so we weren't, weren't putting one back. There are some trees that would be planned to come down along the, um, house of 9 Penny Lane, and that's actually been coming from, um, some of the comments from that neighbor, as they would like those trees, uh, taken down. Um, and again, this, this ties into the project that we're working with the wetland scientists on their lot as well, to rectify some wetland filling there. But we're looking at, um, they're gonna be putting a, a, a white vinyl fence, more than likely, as part of that project, um, to screen their property from, from this one as, as well. Um, but otherwise, um, there's no, uh, extensive tree cutting coming, uh, taking place, again, except for the stormwater basin, which is adjacent to the wetlands. And then, uh, Section 12 is a development impact statement. Uh, again, due to the small number of lots, um, being built off of existing infrastructure, uh, we were just asking for a waiver for the development impact statement. Um, and that, that covers, um, the, the list of waivers, um, there. Um, one other thing I, I wanted to, to bring up, I'm pretty sure we'll get to it eventually when we go through department comments... I'm pretty sure we'll get to it eventually when we go through department comments, but there was one, um, that comment, I think we, we were planning on talking tonight. It was uh, during Elizabeth's review, um, it was great, a great catch, and I wanted to make sure we bring it up, is in regard to street lighting. So, we haven't shown any proposed streetlights on the plan, not asking for a waiver at this point yet either. Um, but that was one thing I, we'd like to, to discuss with the board, what, what you have for preferences. I know we've done it a couple of different ways over the years, where we've had a, a single light pole, we've had, um, uh, people have individual lamps on their property. So, I will leave that for a discussion later on, but um, that is one, one item that is not on the plans as of yet. Cause we're just looking for some input from the board on what your preference might be, uh, but otherwise, that's the, the summary of, of the waivers.
Okay, fine. Uh, good.
Hey Anthony?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Uh, this is Tom Carrigan. If my memory serves me correctly, isn't five Penny Lane a non-buildable lot now?
Yes, five, yeah, five Penny Lane is essentially um, one of the, one of the parcels as part of this subdivision. It's, it's uh, unimproved, um, doesn't have enough area, so um, it's not.
Cause it looks like the roadway goes onto the corner of that lot.
Yes, we're using part of that lot to help, to help shift that right-of-way to get more space from that abutter, absolutely. So it's, it was nice that we had that parcel to, to do that with, um, so yes, we're actually taking a little bit away from that parcel.
Okay.
Did we get an A and R on that, Anthony?
What's that?
Did we get an A and R on the change of the, of that lot?
No, that, it's, it's part of the subdivision, so that'll, it's, it's, if you want to.
Oh, it's part of the subdivision, okay.
Yep, yeah, you can see it much clearer on the definitive subdivision plan, which is um, page two in this uh, set Elizabeth, if you wanna flip to that.
No, I agree, I saw it on the plan.
Okay, good, yeah, yeah.
But I just wasn't sure whether it was a, you know, originally a, an individual lot that was changed.
Yep, yep, no, it's, it was just kind of a leftover lot, um, you know, it's probably part of when this area was all split up at one time. But it's, it doesn't meet any zoning at this point, so um, it would not planning it to be a buildable lot. It's, I think on the definitive plan, we actually noted as um, a non-buildable lot, let me just check that.
Can you go to page two, Elizabeth, or whoever's controlling, just so we can see it?
There you go, yep. So top of the page there, we can zoom in a little bit. So you have parcel B. Um, top, top left, right adjacent to Mary Ave, yep, you have parcel B. So that's the portion we're taking from um, uh, five Penny Lane to make it part of the right-of-way. And then you're left with, with parcel C is what gets left over. Um, and then, in, on that plan, we have a note number five, which is on the left-hand side of this plan. Um, noting that parcels A, B, and C are not to be considered building lots. And parcel A is the, the remaining land to the right-hand side of the page.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Excuse me.
Okay. Uh, let us first depart.
I'll pull them up.
I've been here, but I had to eat something, I was hungry. Wanted to watch, have to have you guys watch me eat.
Maybe without eating, thank you for reading. Count.
You're actually mothers?
Who, me?
I know, I'm on a train.
My, my mother is no longer with us.
I know, you're not with your mothers. It's where you used to.
She would've had take-home at the very minimum, right?
I made, I made six lasagnas in honor of my mother last weekend.
Oh my god.
Mm-hmm, got it down, I've got her, I've got it down, she'd be proud of me.
I'm, I'm baking cookies with my mother next week.
All right.
Italian cookies.
Hey, you had asked about fire. They didn't have many comments at all, they just said they approve.
Okay.
Didn't sign anything?
This is, you have my memo, of course, but I'm not gonna go through that now. Building inspector, approve. No um, further comments. Police department. No comments at all.
No.
Just for traffic or safety issues. Wire inspector. Signed and dated. That he saw the plans, but he didn't have any issues. DPW director, at the time, now this is dating back to. Um. April of two thousand nineteen, at the time, DPW wanted more um, information. Did we already, uh, I believe you already addressed everything that they said, we talked about this at a previous meeting?
Yeah, but we can, we can go through it again, uh, pretty quickly, so um.
Cause there are two new members, so maybe that better.
Yeah, absolutely, so, so number one was in relation to that proposed manhole um, on Main Street. We'd originally shown it in the Main Street right-of-way, and so they had just asked it to be shifted to the east, so it would be located on private property. And the current plans uh, uh, depict that. Um, they asked for a copy of the stormwater pollution plan, also known as a SWIP to the DPW. Um, so if you're familiar with the, the SWIP process, so anytime you disturb more than an acre of land. You have to file uh, a national pollution discharge elimination system, NIPD's permit with EPA. And as part of that, you develop a stormwater pollution prevention plan for the project. We typically don't do those until closer to construction, cause some of the information is, is more construction-related. But um, what would be a typical condition is to condition an approval, um, if you feel so fit. To just make sure that a, a SWIP is submitted to the city, um, you know, prior to construction or, or prior to the first billing permit, something like that. Um, and the third one, um, please provide the DPW with a homeowners association agreement to maintain all stormwater structures. Including detention basins and subsurface basins and the sanitary sewer force mains and pump stations. And so I think where, where that was coming from is, um, my understanding is that, uh, I think the DPW thought it was unlikely. In their mind, that this would be taken over by the city. That was our intention, is for this to eventually be taken over by the city of Leominster. Um, I, I think they, they felt as though that may not um, be as likely as other subdivisions. I think that's being, because Bella Villa is also considered private, um, as well as Penny Lane and Mary Ave. Um, so, in the event that um, the city would not accept this, um, we would have to provide and create a homeowners association. To then be responsible for uh, the things that they list there.
And Anthony, I mean, we, you've had discussions with them since this, and according to the new plan, eject the system. Um, they were okay, is that eliminate, is that the answer to question three?
No, I mean, so it's, um, in, 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 you could, you would still, you could still reference that. You wouldn't necessarily need a homeowners assoc- association for the sewer force mains. I think the biggest item on that, my guess is what they're concerned about, is the stormwater system. The stormwater basin in the back and the, in the, in the catch basins. Um, you know, to make sure that, uh, in the event that the city of Leamers doesn't take that over, which would typically be the responsibility of a DPW once taken over. If the city doesn't take that over, I think they just wanna make sure that that's covered in some fashion.
Uh, yeah?
Yeah.
If that was to come up, that they wanted to get the street accepted, okay?
They'd have to comply, John, right?
Then they, then they would have to comply, and they would also have to come up with a easement to that, so the city could take that over.
Got you, for the private piece, right.
But right now, where if this is, you know, more or less private, not to be accepted as a street, and that's what these people will have to understand. Because to get it accepted, these things, this would have to happen.
Yeah, yeah, got you.
Okay.
With the, with the uh, stormwater pollution prevention plan as well?
So that's a separate thing, so what, what that is, it gets kind of confusing, cause it's not really a plan. Uh, I mean, it's not a, a plan in the sense of what we're looking at, like a.
Right, 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 this calculation.
It's a plan in the sense of it's a binder, that gives you all of the standard practices. Um, if there's a spill, what do you do, um, you know, what, what, how do you do a construction entrance? You know, what you do with erosion controls, and so that's really for construction. Uh, the contractor would have that, they have to do inspections and logs, and then once everything is complete. You submit a notice of termination to the EPA, and then that's, that's done. Um, so, but the homeowners association, we, we do show easements on the plans, um, for, uh, we show a proposed access and stormwater easements. For the stormwater basin and the pipe that goes to it, and we do show a twenty-five-foot utility easement. Going from the proposed Mary Ave extension out to Main Street to cover um, the three sewer fourth main. So, we do show it on the plan, so it just becomes eventually, who gets the ownership and responsibility of those? Is, is, is the item there to work out, again.
Are you planning a homeowners association?
No, our original intent was, as we typically would do with most subdivisions, is um, that the intent would be. That the developer would petition the city to accept the road and, and with it, it's stormwater infrastructure. Um, but again, it's, I think, the preliminary um, take from the DPW is that may not be likely. Due to Bella Villa not being public and Mary Ave not being public, so I, I think it was them, you know, kind of bring it to light so it could be discussed. And so everyone's aware of, you know, hey, in this case, the city may not be taking this road as it typically would in other instances. So, I think it's a way to bring it to light so that it's not forgotten, um, you know, and maybe it's, it's something that's, is put in the conditions. You know, that, um, you know, if the city isn't gonna take it over, the homeowners association must be set up. Or um, however the board wants to discuss it, um, either tonight or in future discussions, what you wanna do um, without.
I think that's gonna end up in a condition, because um, that's, that's an issue that we've had all along.
Sure.
Well, plus, John, right, it shouldn't, I mean, the homeowners have to be aware, when they purchase the property and build the homes, that, that this is in effect.
That's correct.
Be an important disclosure. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so again, so I think it was a great, great comment from the DPW on that, to, to let us kind of know, let everyone know. That it, it, it may not be as likely as other subdivisions typically are, um, that the city would, you know, normally take it over. Uh, that, and again, I think we, we would still hope and petition the city to do that. Um, but in the event that doesn't happen, I think they were kind of being proactive to let everyone be aware, um, of what uh, that the city, it may not be possible, so.
I thought, I thought we had a request sometime back from Mary Avenue, I know we had a bond on it. And I think we've activated that bond because it wasn't done, completed. But Mary Avenue itself was made uh, to meet requirements, but it's Bella Villa, which is an old, old street, has never been accepted. So that would have to be brought up to a grade, or the city would have to accept it as is. So that's one of the issues that we have.
Right, do you recall if?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, do you recall if, if the other end of Mary Ave was accepted?
No.
Okay.
But we had a bond on it to finish two subdivision regulations.
Okay.
Which we had to activate, and we, the city completed it.
Okay.
So that other end of Bella, of Mary Avenue is at subdivision regulations or close to it.
Yeah.
Okay, but the problem is that Bella Villa, you know, you can't accept Mary Avenue without Bella Villa being accepted.
Right.
And so, and there's some issues, cause Bella Villa doesn't meet uh, standards. So, do we up, do we update it to new standards? Uh, do we, you know, the people on Bella Villa, they really don't care. So, uh, that, so that's the issue, so the city would have to almost accept it, you know, as is. So, that's one of the issues that the city council is struggling with, and the DPW, how do we accept a lot of these older streets? That are around for a long time, but they were built to uh, older standards, let's put it that way.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah, so I guess it's, it's, sounds like maybe that's not a discussion that's gonna be worked out. Um, tonight or evening, but the beginning of the process, where maybe some kind of a condition, um, that.
It was a condition, so you might, you probably wanna make sure that in your plans, that you set up, especially with your, a homeowners association. To cover these.
Right, so maybe I think that can be a condition that we can work out with the board, um, um, you know, that, um. A draft homeowners association be provided, you know, prior to a building permit, or something, I'm sure you've, you've had some sort of condition in the past. Um, you know, and then, you know, in the event that the city of Leominster, um, does not accept um, the subdivision as, as public.
Right.
Well, I, I think the comment from the DPW just include the comment department head, and it's part of the conditions, and that would cover it, wouldn't it?
Well, typically, we do have an attorney.
It would, because, but I think, you know, rather.
No, John, I hear you, I hear you.
Yeah, because the others are, are pretty much gonna be taken care of.
Right.
When there's no, the other ones, they.
I know, I know, it's been an issue, yeah.
Okay. Uh, is that the last, last one?
Conservation Commission, um. These are preliminary, that, they've been through Conservation Commission multiple times. Um, and I believe that the Conservation Commission's satisfied, so these are outdated comments.
Okay.
We should probably update all the comments, too, get them all updated by the department heads.
Um, these are the original ones, um, they're all grouped together.
Addendum to them, maybe.
Yeah.
Just for the record, just to keep everything clean, in case, in case the developer needs it or we need it.
I don't, I don't know that all of these comments were. Yeah. Were addressed. Board of Health. Says that. Um, the applicant proposes to utilize individual sewer ejection systems at all three homes. Potential buyers should be informed about the operations and maintenance required to keep these operating properly. The city has no obligation to work on these as they are on private property.
Discussed, yeah.
And he also says, the three homes appear to be situated in a very dense configuration. Lot three may have some hydrant soils associated with the wetland system.
Well, that's conservation issues.
Yeah, but again, like I said, we, we've, we've gone through extensive um, work with the Conservation Commission and they have.
I think we cover this with a make a condition, that they, they, you order conditions, so the Conservation Commission be taken care of.
Okay, and then there was my review, um, it's four pages, I don't know if you wanna.
No. No, no, just tell us where it's different, Elizabeth.
Yeah. We have your new letters, too, Elizabeth.
Yeah.
This is my new letter, this is my new letter.
Yep.
Um, it's four pages, it's the day of December first, twenty twenty. And um, I went through all the waiver requests, which the applicant already did. And then I listed the sections that were not, were um, outstanding. And then adjacent to that, I listed if a waiver was requested or not. Um. The main piece that wasn't addressed was the lighting, which is something that we mentioned already.
Uh-huh.
Um. Other than that, I didn't have anything outstanding, I just, um. I think that was it. The lighting.
It's concerned, Elizabeth, or the biggest difference was just on the lighting?
Yeah. The, the lighting hasn't been addressed yet by the applicant.
Thank you.
And do we need to do that before we close the hearing?
No, we should discuss that.
Yeah.
Anthony, back, back some time ago, the city council, I want to talk in the late nineties and early two thousands was, the city was under pressure economically. And one of the things that we could save money by reducing streetlights and, and things like that. Well, I've since found that, uh, that didn't work. Now that the, the homes that they didn't have streetlights, the people now requesting them because it's, it's pretty dark. And the homes that said that they would.
Sorry. I'm laughing.
I live in one.
Home just said that they would have, uh, put the lights out on the, the individual homes. Um, people don't comply. They shut them off. So, um, that be, that's become an issue with a couple of places that were in the past that we had awarded. Unless there was going to be a separate, uh, a circuit that couldn't be shut off for streetlights, uh, individual home lights. So.
But we have, we have allowed certain types, right, John? Other types rather, you know, a standard, you know, telephone pole type. Yeah. From configurations or designs based on, on developments, I believe. Haven't we?
So we would like, I think, in general, that we would like to have lights there now.
Yeah. So I think, so absolutely. So it's, so you're saying, um, it wouldn't be acceptable to have, uh, you know, three individual lamp posts on each person's property, um, that they could turn on and off. So you're looking for a streetlight that would be, um, you know, would, that would be like, you know, kind of in the, in the road right of way, a main street light. It wouldn't be a telephone pole. You know, it would probably be some kind of decorative, um, you know, black, black lamp, you know, kind of a, kind of a.
When I grabbed it.
One, one I was involved with was the end of Sawtell Road, um, that, uh, that crazy subdivision where it was, where we went to the end of that. But, um, but we had, um, I think we had one light. It was six lots and we had one light, um, kind of in the middle. Um, and I guess we could do something similar here is, um, you know, show, if this road's only two hundred and forty-five feet long. Yeah. So we could kind of show one light. Um, I don't, uh, Elizabeth, if you don't mind flipping back to that colored plan.
I'd probably say right at the left-hand corner in the back of Five Penny Lane, shining on a circle, which.
Or, or let me ask you this. Can you put the three lights, you know, you know, you were talking about individual lot having control of their own light. Well, if you put that light in the right of way and it had it, it was on a separate circuit that ran like you would for any streetlights, that might look really nice there. And it would serve the purpose and, and you'd have more illumination.
Not necessarily. Um, because they got to be small lights.
Yeah.
But I think, I think Mr. Carrigan, it's a good idea. I, I, I kind of like that location too. Um, while other members think, but right behind Five Penny Lane, it's not really, um, right in front of someone's house. But it gives you a good shine of the cul-de-sac and the road coming down.
And it's a not building, a lot. Yeah.
You illuminate the circle, you're going to like that whole area. So.
Tommy, that's a great idea, actually. That's a real good idea. I like that.
Yeah. So we can, we can.
Lot. It's a dead lot as well.
Yep.
So that's a good.
Yeah. So if, if that's, if that's, uh, acceptable, I can, I can either make it a condition or I can very easily, um, add that right to the plan.
Add it to the plan.
Do both. Yeah. I'll add it right to the plan.
Yeah. Don't even, yeah, just add it to the plan.
Yeah, that's fine.
And that would be the requirement, right? Or is this, it'd be so many feet?
No, it isn't. It isn't anything at so many feet. It's basically just to, um, work with the, um, work with the utility provider. Um, uh, streetlights are required and installation should be coordinated with national grid. Yes. I think in the past, it's been kind of at the board's discretion on how many, um, you might need. Um, for, for reference, there's also a streetlight at the intersection of Mary Ave and Bella Villa on a telephone pole. Um, there is, as well. Um, I think, yeah. That where Bella Villa comes down and then you go left and right at Mary Ave, there's a telephone pole shown. Um, right near the E in Mary Ave, there's a light on that pole, um, you know, old school telephone pole light. But I think it's a great spot behind Five Penny Lane that kind of gives you a good coverage on, on most of it. I think most people don't want the whole area all lit up, but you want enough, you know, for security so you can see and.
Yep.
I don't think you need one in front of every house. That's for sure.
No.
No, yeah.
No, 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 no. And like I said, the ones that with individual pole lights at different homes, it doesn't work because you're going to get somebody and go, I don't want to pay for that light and they shut it off all the time.
Right, right, right. No, I was thinking as a system, not that the homeowner controlled.
Mm-hmm.
It would be lower, but, you know, maybe more decorative. But I like Tommy's idea better. I think it's good. Do that, Tom. We'll agree in with you.
Okay.
He's been in the library lately. He's been studying up.
Don't pick on.
Look at him.
Actually.
Okay. Do we have any other questions if yes, we want to answer?
Actually, if, it's, she's, I guess my memory, um, escaped me here, but Elizabeth, if you don't mind going to the, to the set of plans.
Is this Anthony speaking?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'll be doing the minutes later. So I just want to make sure I have it correct.
Yep. Yep. Sorry about that. If you want to go to, it's going to be, uh, sheet number, uh, page seven of this PDF. Um, I, I, I guess it escaped me. Um, because I was just looking at my plan so I can make a note for revision. So if you can zoom in, please, Elizabeth. Zoom straight in, right behind the lot of Five Penny Lane. And right about where it says, proposed streetlight, C note E.
Yep.
I, I guess I had forgotten because it's been so long. I had already, I had already shown it there.
You already have it.
There you go.
I like it.
So, sorry about that. Um, and Elizabeth, sorry when you asked me the question. I completely forgot that I have that on there. So.
Maybe it could be shown on some other, uh, other sheets as well.
Yeah. So what we do is we typically show streetlights on the utility plan. Again, these plans get so busy. I'd be happy to show other plans too. And so we show on this plan, if you want to scroll to the left-hand side of the plan, um, which is where's, uh, note E is. Other side, yeah.
Oh, is that where you thought? Or do you think it should be closer to the cul-de-sac? I mean, to the beginning of the cul-de-sac?
We'll get to that in a second. So while we're at note E, and I just put, uh, basically verbatim from the, the, the sort of interregulations coordination to be done with the local utility company prior to construction to finalize utility layout and design. Um, but yeah, we can show that pole moves, um, anywhere, um, that you feel, um, appropriate.
Tom, you were thinking toward the other corner, right? So it's right at the intersection.
Yeah, basically on the corner.
Yeah, between Mary Ave and the cul-de-sac.
Right under Mary Ave, you'll see it and then it'll make that whole.
Yep. Right on the corner before you hit the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
To the opposite end.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's good. You like it?
Okay.
And Carol?
Do we have any other questions or comments?
If I have nothing to say, you know, I like it.
I'm just teasing you.
Okay.
Very rare.
Well, then a motion would be in order.
Quiet tonight. Motion to close the hearing?
By Sal.
Yeah.
Talking by Tom.
Motion by Sal, seconded by.
Tom.
Tom. Close the hearing. Any further discussion?
Nope.
No, no, call for the roll call.
Jason Perry.
Yeah.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Patrick Perle.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Tom Cargan.
Yes.
Dr. Kone.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Caesar.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Six thirty-five. Over public committee for site plan approval for Central Street, Brooks Pond Road, assesses map three seventeen as possible, ten, five B, three, and seven A. This was continued?
No, this wasn't. Oh. Yes, it was. It was originally scheduled for November sixteenth.
Right.
And we have Chris Anderson here.
Do we have Chris? Oh, I see. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Thank you, Chris.
Can you hear yourself?
Good. Good. Thank you.
Elizabeth, are you able to pull up the, uh, November, or sorry, October twenty-second plans that it was? So, uh, just for the record, Chris Anderson with Hanny Engineering, here in half of Liberty Rental Corps, with me is Peter Vivenzzi, uh, the applicant of the project. Uh, this project was before the board, uh, several meetings ago, uh, for the construction of three assisted living facility, uh, buildings off of Brooks Pond Road at the intersection, close to the intersection with Central Street. Um, it was reviewed last meeting, um, and it's my understanding that it was continued pending review by the Conservation Commission as it's worked within, uh, full proximity to Brooks Pond. Um, at this point in time, we have, uh, received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, um, with the, had a condition that they be kept abreast of the constant, uh, erosion control measure inspections that are part of the, uh, stormwater pollution prevention plan with SWIP, if you will. Um, they just want to be aware of, uh, the inspection, uh, regularities and, uh, any issues that do arise. Uh, besides that, the commission has approved the plans as, uh, depicted right now. Um, really quick overview, but if there are any questions from the board, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Was there any issues with the conservation that they had?
Uh, at this point in time, no. The only concern they had was the erosion, um, and the continued maintenance of the erosion control measures. Uh, but as this project is, uh, going to be included with a SWIP, um, the EPA requires us to do regular inspections and maintenance as needed on the erosion control measures. And that was just their primary concern was making sure that the erosion measures that be near the, uh, the lake are kept intact and functional during the course of construction.
Okay. Okay. Very good. I think that's all we were waiting for. Just make sure they had, uh, this shot. Do we have any?
I got an email from Conservation Agent on November thirtieth saying, um, that they had a permit for Brooks Pond and she'd have it by the end of the day. I know, um, I spoke with Conservation Agent. I know she's very backed up. I didn't get that written, um, issuance yet.
I have it. I can, I can get it to you. It was issued on the thirtieth and we received it.
So she did finish it on the thirtieth. Okay.
Okay. So you have the order of conditions?
Yep. I got it. So I'm a little concerned with.
Yeah, we can make it conditional. We can make the, we can make the approval conditional based on the order of conditions as well.
We will do that in any comment from departments.
Yep. Department head comments.
I don't see.
I think it's, I think it's a great thing. I really, I'm really liking this. We need so much of it. I'm almost telling you.
A lot of comments look good. So.
Did you go through, did you go through all the, um, comments from my November sixth memo?
I can make you a plate to bring in.
You want to, you want to go through them?
I think we should just take another look.
I'll make it on a tray that you can heat up.
Everything was good for parking. Everything was good for snow storage. Um, there's some minor comments I had in regards to landscaping that they needed to indicate the species of the tree plantings. I'm just reading through these. Um, it says that all pedestrian accessways should not be less than fifth, five feet in width. Um, I thought maybe that would include the footpath, but I don't know if they would need a waiver from making the footpath five feet and wide.
Do you have any that are less than five feet?
Uh, through the chair, uh, no, all, um, sidewalks and pathways, um, within the parking area and access to the buildings are all, um, at five feet. So there's, um, it's all, it's meeting all the code.
Okay. I thought they were.
The lighting plan was shown on sheet five, but I had asked for that to be elaborated. Um, upon in detail how provisions of section sixty-two point two will be met. Twenty-two dash sixty-two point two. So there's the lighting and just a general comment, confirm the floodplain zone on the map. Um.
If you blow up the plan, you can see the floodplain.
Okay. At the north arrow to each sheet, that was an easy fix. All the buddy and prof- properties within three hundred feet of the plan should be shown. Con- um, confirm that any and all easements and right of way are detailed on the site plan. Indicate the proposed signage. And include architectural elevations for proposed new buildings.
That'd be a part of the plan.
Okay. Maybe, um, since I made that comment, you did provide them. It says that all side yard setbacks are supposed to be landscaped.
I think they are.
Um, bicycle racks are required. I don't know that they, you might want a waiver from that. I don't know if people of this age uh, this, um, life stage one, a bicycle rack, but it's required. Um.
I don't have an op, I'm not a consultant.
And you did provide the traffic impact statement, I believe.
Yes.
So there's just a couple of items there. Nothing major.
Uh, you might be people riding their bike up from Brooks Pond.
Yep.
They might, you might need.
It might be John riding his bike, right?
I might have an electric one though.
I don't have any problems. Making those conditions, you know, to.
I don't know if you want the, the bike racks or not.
They don't bother me. You never know.
I think it would be very nice to have bike racks. You know, if you're not used, then you address it down the road, but you know, I don't think.
Try it, actually.
You'd be surprised.
Okay.
It'd be a good idea.
Do we have a boat landing for the pond?
We don't have that.
Couple of gondolas on.
I'd have to go back to conservation. I don't think they'd like it.
Okay. Do I have any other comments on this? Looks like a good project. Let's make sure all the bases are covered. That's all. Any other comments from board members?
Nope. Good.
Anything else from Chris? Or Peter? Peter, you've been quiet today.
I keep the volume off just for everyone else's benefit.
Okay.
Thanks, Pete. Thank you.
Between Mary Ann and Brooks Pond, I'm happy Mary Avon, Brooks Pond, I'm happy to see two. Old friends. What I'm called get done.
Yeah. Okay.
Talking.
Agree on that.
I think we're in pretty good shape. A motion would be in order.
Motion to close the hearing.
By Sal.
I'll second that.
Who seconded? Tom seconded?
Seconded at the close of the hearing?
I can't hear that you cut out.
Tom seconded.
Tom seconded it. Any other comments? Did we?
Well, you know.
Do we have any waivers on this?
Yes.
We addressed all those last meeting.
I thought we did.
We did.
Okay.
And we had.
There's a waiver that the.
There's a waiver for landscaping.
For landscaping. That's all. Well, we weren't. Okay.
That was just a formal plan. There was a waiver for.
Right. Okay.
My landscape architect. That's what it was.
Roll call. On closing.
Jason Paray?
Yes.
Dean Valier?
Yes.
Patrick Perla?
Yes.
Paul Weiser?
Yes.
Tom Karrigan? Sal Chacone?
Yes.
Carol Vittoriasso?
Great project.
Carol Vittoriasso?
She's here.
Sal. Sal's big voice covered my yes.
Okay. John Souza?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Nice.
Yep.
Called order, regular meeting.
Jason Paray?
Here.
Dean Valier?
Here.
Patrick Perla?
Here.
Paul Weiser?
Here.
Tom Karrigan?
Here.
Sal Chacone?
Here.
Carol Vittoriasso?
Yeah.
John Souza?
Yeah. Okay. Minutes of previous meetings.
October nineteenth.
Let's see, the first one I got here. October nineteenth?
October nineteenth.
Yeah.
They are thorough. Not much missed, that's for sure.
Okay. On page three. Says when we're talking about the planning board, the city council, so they did not have to come back to us. They would come back to Ms. Wood. That really should be back to the planning department.
Okay, I'm a little slow here. Page three, where are we?
Page three, two thirds of the way down. Second to the last paragraph. Oh, it's in section five. Was second, last sentence. It starts Mr. Souza. Stayed at due to have come back, come back to the, and it should be planning department.
They go back right here?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're on page three. Come back to the planning department instead of Ms. Wood?
Right.
Okay. I can amend that.
I think that's all I had on that. Yep. Are there any other additions or changes or deletions?
I make a motion to accept, Pat.
Okay.
I will second that, Paul.
With that one change.
With that one change.
Second from Paul.
I have a second for any discussion. Here or not, I'll call for the roll call.
Jason Paray?
Yes.
Dean Valier?
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't present.
Patrick Perla?
Yes.
Paul Weiser?
Yes.
Tom Karrigan?
Yes.
South Chacone? South Chacone?
He's not on.
He's on, but he's not responding.
Sandra's here.
Should do a wellness check quick then, because if he's not talking, we have a problem.
Battling with the mute button.
Yeah.
Probably found some food somewhere.
Okay, Carol Vittoriasso?
Yes.
John Souza?
Yes.
So it's seven zero?
Motion carries.
Seven, seven, oh, sorry, six, zero, one. One abstention.
Abstain.
Six, one, zero.
There he is.
Okay.
Say yes.
Yes.
Sal, did you want to vote?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's.
That's my thing, man, for a minute.
Motion carries.
Seven, one, zero. Or I'll figure out. I always get that messed up. One abstention.
Okay. Minutes of November second. Do we have any additions, deletions, or questions? Here none? Call for the roll call. I need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept. Second.
Tom and Pat?
Yep.
Okay. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Okay, call for the roll call.
Jason Paray?
Yeah.
Dean Valier?
Yes.
Patrick Perla?
Yes.
Paul Weiser?
Yes.
Tom Karrigan?
Yes.
South Chacone?
Abstain. Wasn't there.
Okay, Carol Vittoriasso?
Yes.
John Souza?
Yes. Three point zero plans submitted and our approval for nineteen road chavium. Map two six two lots two dash twelve and eighteen A.
Hey, I'll pull it up. Sorry, I'm trying to be I'm trying to be myself and Stephanie today, so.
Your camera's all papers right now. It's crazy.
Paper mask.
Yeah. We can see. You're doing a great job.
Let me pull up that A and R. Okay, here we are.
Jesus, no wonder I can't see.
Can you see it?
I don't know. I was talking about my glasses being dirty. Parcel four A?
There's a staff report that I provided. And I pulled up the plan so you can see it. There's a description in my memo as to what's being proposed.
Up through the chair?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Chris Anderson with Hanning Engineering here in behalf of Pierce Pond Realty Trust and Peter Bivenzi from Pierce Pond Realty Trust is also here. So we're looking to add an additional parcel to number nineteen road chav, which is depicted as lot nineteen on the plan in front of you. And lot four A, which is part of the original Pierce Pond subdivision plan, utilized as the detention basin currently. The intent to essentially. Add a portion of lot four A into lot nineteen. This will be a twenty-foot wide attachment, which is essentially going to be the opposite side of the existing open space. I'm sorry, the existing. Twenty-five foot or the twenty-foot buffer, that's part of the subdivision plan. So we're just adding or moving the lot line north to allow for the inhabited area above the garage on the existing building that's there now. So this is a pre-existing nonconforming lot and we're adding more to it. So we're not increasing the nonconformity of the lot itself.
Okay, that's pretty straightforward. Any other, any questions on this?
I needed fifteen feet, right? That's all you needed. Yep.
Correct. To make life easy, it's going to run on the easement. So the easement doesn't get eliminated, but it's now on the number nineteen parcel rather than the subdivision parcel.
Okay.
It's good to me. Motion to endorse.
Wait a minute.
Nope, what?
I had two, I had two comments on here. If you look at my report. Um. The zoning classification needs to be displayed.
Elizabeth, can you go through the plan, Stephanie, or the plan?
Is it on there?
Believe it is.
Okay, show me where it is. Where is it?
If you scroll down to the bottom right. Right, move your cursor to the left. You have your zoning district information right there.
Okay, I. I oversaw that. I apologize. Did you, the other question I had was the setbacks weren't shown of the existing house to the property lines?
So the existing house is a pre-existing nonconforming, so the house has been moved or increased the nonconformity in those areas, so but those are not on the plan right now.
Okay, they're they're supposed to be on the plan. Even if it's pre-existing nonconforming.
Easy enough to do.
I'm just suggesting that they be added.
Does it show?
If you see the house there and there's no setbacks and we'd like.
enlarge it a little bit. I mean, I'm just going to the front of the lot. There's the lot itself, me.
That's the existing house, right?
Yes.
Existing house.
Yeah, okay.
It's existing, so it's really not going to come into play, is it?
It's a requirement in our regulations that you let the setbacks be on there.
It could be dead condition approval.
Yeah.
Can you put that on?
Yep. That's easier, no?
I mean, it's existing, so it doesn't make any difference, you know?
No, but it's supposed to be on.
It has to be shown.
It's fine, we can add it.
Yep. Stroke of a pen.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Do I have a motion?
Motion to endorse. Would the would the setback shown?
Sal?
Sal.
I'll second it, Tom.
Okay, roll call, please.
Jason Paray?
Yeah.
Dean Valier?
Yes.
Patrick Perla?
Yes.
Paul Weiser?
Yes.
Tom Karrigan?
Yes.
South Chacone?
Yes.
Carol Vittoriasso?
Yes.
John Souza?
Yes. Good luck.
Okay, so just bring me the amended plan in and I'll be able to endorse it once you do that.
Will do.
Okay.
All business. Division subdivision approval, Mary Avenue Extension, one-one-five-seven Rio Main Street. Okay. We have a number of conditions and waivers that we have to vote on. We can take them. As a block. On the waivers or you can do them individually. Which way, which way you?
No, let's do it as a block. If anyone wants to pull out, let's.
Go through my memo. I have them numbered one through fourteen. You could just refer to numbers.
No, let's let's do them all at once unless there's any one that somebody wants to separate out and talk about. Let's not waste any time. I could.
I have a motion by. Like Paul, that we do them. And block one, two.
It's fourteen of them, right? Fourteen of them.
Yep.
The streetlights aren't on here, right? That's not a waiver request.
It's on the utility plan. We we didn't originally know that, but he pointed that out.
Yeah. So is that one of the waivers we're asking?
No, not a waiver for like.
No, just no. So it's just the fourth.
Not on the list.
Yep.
Okay, do I have?
Second, Pat.
Who, who?
I'll just. Yo, I'll just run through them quickly. I'll remind you, soil evaluation.
Yep.
Invert elevation. Sidewalks. Street trees. Cul-de-sac planting. Street length. Coinciding roadway, right of way, center line. Row width, road that should be road width. Traveled way. We got to take that one individual because they're going to reduce it. Because it just says thirty-four feet.
Well, it's a twenty-eight feet, right?
We got to change that to what? Twenty-eight?
Well, it's thirty-four until it hits.
Right.
Right.
Sidewalks. The grass strip. The water main. Open space. What was the open space one?
Twenty-foot buffer.
Oh, that's the twenty-foot buffer. Okay. And development impact statement. That's the fourteen.
Right.
And in reading that, the road width goes from fifty to forty. The travel way goes from thirty-four to twenty-eight.
Correct. Yes.
Where it matches from Mary, Mary to Penny, correct? That's where it goes down to twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, the.
And the the water main with approval from the DPW, do we have that in writing with approval from the DPW for eight inches to six inch?
Um, I don't have that in my record, no.
We should probably have that in writing from the.
Or make that a condition with with approval with the DPW.
Yep, yep.
Yes, specific. Okay. We give it that condition.
So number twelve with approval of the DPW pending.
Written approval.
Yep.
Yep.
And and was the water and sewer? Was the HOA discussion part of that water and water?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not a waiver, that's.
Catch.
We'll discuss that after.
Well, it's not a waiver. We're going to, yeah. Part of the plan.
This call though.
Okay, on the waivers, were those changes? Any further discussion?
Can you read the changes again, John? What were the changes?
The only change was the addition of the written requirement of the DPW on number twelve.
Right.
Very good.
Let's move.
Okay.
So there was a motion by?
The Paul.
Paul.
Okay. And seconded by Gil?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
That was to take him, the waivers in block one through fourteen as presented in your.
Well, that's a separate vote. You gotta do, we didn't do that vote yet and then we gotta.
We didn't do that vote yet. We gotta do that vote first.
That's correct.
The first vote is to take them in block.
Great, let's vote.
Roll call.
Jason Parry.
Yeah.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
South Chacony.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Cal, you didn't mute quick enough.
He's a yes.
Good, good. Her mouth said yes.
She's a yes.
She said yes, I, I didn't see it. John.
You wanna mute, Cal, you wanna mute?
You keep talking.
Go back to her. There you go.
Yes, I said yes.
John Souza.
Yes. Okay, now on the intake and in block, there was a condition that the eight-inch um pipe
What?
Uh, to six inch uh, be approved, get written approval from the uh, DPW.
Yep.
Correct.
I think that was, uh.
And, and the right-of-way was fifty feet to forty and the traveled way thirty-four feet to twenty-eight feet.
Twenty.
Correct. Okay. Any further discussion on that?
So a motion to approve the block with, uh, with conditions noted.
That's correct.
Second.
Any further discussion? I have a motion from Sal, I believe.
Seconded by Jason?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Jason Parry.
Yeah.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
South Chacony.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes. Okay, the last part that we gotta deal with is the, uh, the acceptance of the roadway and the um homeowners association. Okay, and I think a condition should be made that a homeowners association and documentation uh, must be presented to us. Okay. Uh, prior at the time of, uh, at the time of acceptance. Okay, and be part of the bond. What I'm saying is that they, when they finish these three houses, they'll have to come back to us, okay, with.
With a draft of the homeowners association.
Homeowners Association.
And you want them to come back to the board?
Yes.
Okay.
It has to, homeowners association has to be approved by the board, so that has to be, that becomes part of the final approval. So that's a condition.
So is there, is there a reason to take any further votes if they have to come back anyway?
Well, we could do it, we could do it a couple of ways. We could, we could say that they can, they can go ahead with construction and then prior to
occupancy permit.
Permit of any homes. Okay, a, um. We have to have a copy of the homeowners association.
I don't know, I, I might caution on that one because sometimes this department has a condition and the building department, um.
You also wanna see what it is.
We lose control, we lose central control over enforcing that from this department if we, if we leave it to a different department.
And what if we ultimately don't approve the, the association documents and they've already built stuff? But I wouldn't.
And what if they don't need to have the home association agreement because everything was improved?
I wouldn't go any further until we get that done. I, I tabled at this point.
Um, no, let's, let's, well, how about if we, uh.
Just condition it.
Well, but you can't condition the fact that they have to create something we haven't seen and approve it that we haven't seen.
And often we have an attorney review them on.
Yeah, that's too important a piece to simply gloss over. Because that's how you get control over everything going forward for those documents.
Can we ask for it in like a, an upcoming meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I would table it till it's ready because I don't, I don't know that there's any point in proceeding without it. And we've spent over an hour on this already. We're gonna do it again next time. I'm not sure it's worth spending any more time going through this when we're just gonna have to go back to the drawing room.
Well, I'm sorry to ask this question, but this isn't a open space plan, right? Why do they, are they offering a homeowners agreement because of?
The sewer.
Well, it's three separate lines going off the main street.
Right. And, and the fact that we've got a, an unaccepted road off of an unaccepted road.
Right.
Which is a hundredth of a.
We've got residents all over town complaining that their roads are unaccepted and we're about to approve another unaccepted road. Which is a big point.
Um. Are we taking a covenant on this property?
That hasn't been discussed.
Are we taking what?
Will we have a covenant on the property?
Yeah, but you gotta, you gotta note what the covenant includes.
Holding any lots until conditions are met.
But even then, without seeing the documents and knowing what it's gonna cover and what it's gonna protect, I just don't know how to proceed.
I agree with Paul, we should just ask for a draft of a, of a, an HOA that, uh, you know, identifies the fact that the road is unaccepted.
And how they're gonna maintain it and pay for it going forward. The city doesn't get started.
If it doesn't get, yeah.
But, but there's one important piece though, is you closed the hearing.
Yeah.
So you can't go back and have discussion.
So do we say approval pending? I, I don't know how to do that because I don't know what we're approving until we see the document.
Well, well, that's it. We don't approve it. We just say that there's, we, that we had that as, uh, as an issue.
Yeah, but we can.
Close everything else out.
Okay, Carol's right, the hearing's closed, so if we continue it, we can't take new information. So then what, what do we do?
Isn't it a pretty simple document?
Basically, it is not a very simple document.
Oh, if you look at that document we have from Willett Street was about twelve pages.
I mean, the, the, the one for my complex is double that. And, and I find new things in it all the time.
You could, you, you could make it a condition of approval and make it administrative. Um.
Ever then.
Are pending review by town council.
No, I think I want to review by the board.
But you, you can't have discussion because you closed the hearing.
How many, can we have a public informational hearing on it? Then we can.
No, that was a condition. Uh, that was.
Do you mind if I interject for a minute, please?
Time to close the hearing, we discussed it. So we can.
Discuss it.
I think.
Someone's trying to.
Anthony wants to say something.
Please.
Please.
Yeah, if I, if I can, I think in past projects when we've had items like this, maybe not particularly homeowners association, where it has been discussed during the public hearing process, discussed knowing that some sort of a homeowners association was gonna be required by the board, I've seen approvals written such that a homeowners association needs to be submitted to the planning board for their, uh, review and, and acceptance. And make that a condition and then it just becomes part of when you require that to be reviewed and approved. Whether it be prior to signing of the definitive plans, prior to issuance of a bond, prior to release of a bond. But I, I think because it was been discussed in, in past projects, other items, we've seen that where it's a conditional approval that the board still reserves the right to review.
It's a good suggestion.
And comment on that document. It, it's been discussed that the document is needed. It just becomes, you know, reviewing and kind of blessing on that document.
That's a good suggestion. That's a great suggestion.
That was good.
And we did discuss it during the hearing.
We did.
And it, it was agreed that it would be provided. And so maybe we tie it to the release of the bond, approval, you know. It's gotta be way before that.
No, no, you can do it before the signature of the definitive plan.
Right, that's, that's.
There you go. Baby.
Okay.
That's great, Anthony. Thank you.
Yeah, prior to definitive is. There you go.
I had a signature of the definitive plan.
When do you think you might be eating?
Thanks very much for that.
Yeah, it's perfect.
Okay, John, you were making a motion.
So that would be a motion.
Moved.
Second.
I have a motion moved and seconded. Okay, on the.
Can you restate that for the record? I have, um, condition that the homeowners association documentation must be provided um, prior to the signature of the definitive plan.
Provided and approved prior to, prior to signature of the, the the definitive.
Provided and approved by the planning board, provided and approved by the planning board. Provided by the applicant and approved by the planning board.
Prior to the signature of the definitive plan. I, that's what we said.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So the motion, John, are you, are you, as chair, are you able to make motions?
Not really.
So does somebody wanna make?
I'll, I'll make.
I made the motion.
Paul made the motion?
Right.
Yeah, Paul did.
Paul, thank you for that wonderful motion.
Yes, you're welcome.
Seconded by.
Sal.
Jason.
Jason, seconded by Jason.
Let Justin do it.
Yep, absolutely, that's great.
And John, you asked for roll call?
Roll call.
Jason Parry.
Yeah.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Tommy.
He's a yes to.
Did we lose Tom?
He got bumped.
We lost, we lost Tom, so Tom's not here. South Chacony.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a seven, zero.
Yes.
Okay. That's a good.
If I can just jump in one more time, sorry, Anthony Cleves again. Um, I know we discussed that streetlight, um. I, I revised the plan and emailed that to Elizabeth, so you have a revised plan on the relocation of that streetlight?
Yeah, we, we discussed that, you had that completed and that you didn't need a, a waiver.
No, he was gonna move it to the other corner.
Oh, oh, oh.
One of the planning board members requested that it be moved.
Right, he's on the ball.
So in case you wanted, in case you were planning on doing a condition, I revised the plan real quick so you wouldn't have to add that condition. So Elizabeth, you should have that in your email.
Yeah, I see it.
You got the revised plan? Oh, okay, good. Well, that's the quickest revision I ever got.
I know, and Anthony, they, they ought to give you.
Get too good, Anthony.
You are, you are.
He's making productive use of his time while he's sitting here on a call.
That's, uh, I mean, I, I do miss, I do miss the in-person meetings, but being able to sit at my computer gives me some time to do some stuff, though.
Hey, that looks good.
Advantage is a zoom.
Okay, we'll have to say, um. We'll have to accept the revised drawing as of today. At eight fifteen. Okay, so that's done, that's good. Do we have, uh, anything else on Mary Avenue?
Don't think so.
I don't think so, except of the waivers, conditions, okay?
Just everything from the conservation commission was already.
And.
Addressed.
Right.
You did mention about possibly putting in a condition in reference to the order of conditions. I don't know if you still want.
We did. Uh, yes, department head, uh, comments and conditions.
That's going with the fin, I doubt, that comes with the final approval. We got one more approval to go. The final approval for the, for the subdivision with all amendments and corrections and, uh.
Department head comments and.
Inputs uh, to be accepted with the.
The move.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Okay, wait, who made the motion and who seconded it?
I made the motion. I don't know who seconded.
Sal is I.
Carol did.
Carol. Roll call.
Jason Parry.
Yeah.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan. South Chacony.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes. Motion carries.
Seven, zero.
Okay, four point two.
Thank you, guys.
If I can just interject one more time, please, I'm sorry. Anthony Cleves again, just wanted to say thank you very much for your time and it was nice to see and hear you all. It's been a while and I hope you all stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, Anthony.
Okay, four point two. Site plan approval, Central Street, Brooks Pond Road, assesses map three seventeen as parcels ten, five B slash three and seven A. Do I have a discussion of motion?
None from me.
I think a motion would be an audit, we accept the plan as presented, uh, with conditions, uh, from the uh, department heads and the conservation commission.
I will make that motion.
Waiver on the architect, on the.
Landscaping architect. Uh, I will, I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion made and seconded. Any discussion on this?
It's great. I think it's a great product.
Uh, book room three oh, one oh three.
Oh, are we supposed to get it, just one question, were we supposed to get elevations? Somebody request that elevations? That's a, that's a.
I, I, I had that they had to have architectural elevations and they said they had them.
Okay.
They're, they're in the plan.
They had them.
Just going back to my old memory.
Okay, um, I, I missed the, I'm trying to play two people here, I apologize. Can you tell me again who made the motion and who seconded it?
I made the motion, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Either Carol or Pat, I can't remember who.
I think it was Carol.
It was you, Carol.
So I missed it, what were you motioning? Cause that was offline.
We're motioning, uh, for where was Tom?
He made you the director of MART, you have to go to a.
Just, yeah, you've just volunteered to be the MART representative.
No, I didn't.
Cause you were so good showing up to the last meeting.
I'll second that. Tried that already, didn't work.
Well, that's either Jason or Dean, it was one of those guys. That's beautiful.
Okay.
That's an old joke going back, what, thirty-three years, huh, John?
About that.
About that, yeah.
So anyway, we have a motion made and seconded, uh, with the condition that the, uh, the, well, one waiver on the uh, landscaping plan and.
Did you, are you making a separate motion on the waiver?
And that one's for.
What was that, Carol?
We have to, we have to move, we have to vote on the waiver first.
Uh, okay. That's right, I'm gonna vote on the waiver first.
So Sal made a motion, Carol seconded it, that the waiver we made, is that?
Yeah, yes, on the, on the.
Landscaping.
On the landscaping, yeah.
Okay. Motion made and seconded on the landscaping, sorry, I'm out of order. Motion made and seconded on the landscaping. Sorry, I'm out of order. All in favor?
Oh, wow, whoa. Did you say roll call?
Yep.
Okay, Jason Paray?
Yeah.
Dean Valier?
Yes.
Patrick Perla?
Yes.
Paul Weiser?
Yes.
Tom Carrigan?
Yes.
Sal Chaconi?
Yes.
Carol Vittorio so?
Yes.
John Souza?
Yes.
And then a final motion, accept the plan with conditions. And. Of different department heads. And the conservation commission. And that was a motion previously made by.
Me.
Al and Carol.
I don't know if I worded it the same way, but pretty close.
Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for the roll call.
Jason Paray?
Yes.
Dean Valier?
Yes.
Patrick Perla?
Yes.
Paul Weiser?
Yes.
Tom Carrigan?
Yes.
Sal Chaconi?
Yes.
Carol Vittorio so?
Yes.
John Souza?
Yes.
Eight, zero.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great project. Thank you.
Thank you.
On a personal tour when it gets done.
Thank you. Good luck.
Can't wait to visit Tom and Sal there, thing.
I know, I'll be leaving there shortly. I'm on the list.
Tom who? Tom Mavensi?
I'm gonna need full assistance.
Yeah.
Me and your brother, Tom, that's right.
I'm waiting.
And we're gonna give him garage space, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
That's funny.
Okay, new business.
Done.
New, new business, Willard Street, Defender Subdivision, remand, open, open public hearing.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Okay, Elizabeth, you explain this to the board, please?
Yes, um, we've been requested by, the attorneys of both parties have decided that they're going to have an open public hearing that we need to advertise. Um. On January fourth. So the board needs to, that, it has to be done before January twelfth. So the, the last possible meeting. The only possible meeting we could have due to timing is January fourth, so the board is recommended to consider scheduling it for that date.
All right, let's do it. I assume we have nothing else? So six thirty?
Let me grab the book real quick. I don't think we do, but.
We wouldn't have anything that far out, I'm pretty sure.
No, I think we're, we're pretty safe, huh, Paul?
I would hope.
I'll second Paul's motion.
Okay.
I'll second that emotion.
Check on the date. Nothing, we're good.
For six thirty on, uh, January fourth. For Willard Street subdivision. Any further discussion? Call for the roll call.
Jason Paray?
Yeah.
Dean Valier?
Yes.
Patrick Perla?
Yes.
Paul Weiser? Tom Carrigan? Do we, Tom, you're there here?
He's muted.
Sal Chaconi?
Yes.
Carol Vittorio so?
Yes.
And John Souza?
Yes.
Elizabeth, can I ask you a question about that? So when you say it has to be done by the twelfth, that means we have to have a vote on the fourth?
We had.
Is that the matter?
Uh, no, but you have to, um, have the first public hearing.
Okay, okay.
Is it the first public hear- is it the only public hearing and it has to be closed by the twelfth?
No, it doesn't have to be closed.
Okay, thank you.
It just has to be advertised and held.
To be convened, got it.
Although it will appear on that, um.
And I have to, I have to do all of the butter notifications I have to work with the applicant to.
Yes.
All that process, you're familiar with it.
Same.
Jason and, um. Dean? You familiar with that, what I need to do?
No.
Cause we do have two new members. Okay, so what I have to do is I have to do the legal notification, which means I have to send out a notice to the paper. Um, I need a week buffer to get it in the paper, and then it's gotta publish two weeks in a row, on two Mondays before the, the hearing. And then all of the abutters have to receive the legal notice. Um, notifying of the public hearing, so I need to get, um, a new certified abutters list from the assessors department. So they need at least ten days to do that. They might rush it for us if they're being. Uh. If they're, if, they, they sometimes do that, but I can't count it depending on what their workload is. And, um. I need to get a, a check from the applicant to cover the cost of the mailings to all of the abutters. So that has to be done, and then there's a strict timeframe for that. I need to act on that this week, so.
Gotcha.
Well, set. We gotta call for the roll call on that.
Jason Paray?
Yes.
Dean Valier?
We just.
Patrick Perla?
Yes.
Paul Weiser?
What, or what are we voting on?
Just on, on.
We have the hearing on January.
Did we just?
But we don't have to, do we have to vote on the scheduling?
We just did it. Didn't we just have that vote like a minute and a half?
We did, we did.
And then I asked you, after that vote was over, did we have to conclude it by that point? We just.
Okay.
Okay, there was further discussion, that's all right, that's all right, forget it.
You're good.
All right, buddy, guys.
You wanna vote to really affirm it, I guess we can.
Really?
We'll affirm. All right, next.
Elizabeth Wood, planning development director, requests to petition city council to amend article six, section twenty-two dash thirty-four, special districts, regulation floodplain.
Okay, I'm gonna be pretty quick tonight on this one. Um, just in summary as to where we are with it. Um, the state came forward with a bunch of amendments that needed to be made. I went through, I made all of the amendments, it's, um. You have the document in hand, it's, it's, uh. How many pages is it? It's. It's like seven pages. I don't have them numbered, but it's lengthy. So I had the state floodplain administrator look over my amendments. And, and they were done with also, I paired it with the conservation agent so that we worked on them together, so that we had a partnership. Um, and we sent them to the state, um, floodplain director. She came back to us with a whole host of edits, which are in your, in your, um. In your packet and also comments. Now, what needs to happen next is more grunt work. I need to sit with the conservation agent, and we have arranged for Thursday to do that, to spend several hours. Um, integrating all the comments from the, that came in into the final document. So before we petition city council, we need to have that final document. Um, we could have it, um, this week, and then on the twenty-first, we, the board can really take their time. If we have a meeting on the twenty-first. Um, and, and go through that, um, amended version.
Okay, sounds good.
So is that, uh, we didn't talk about.
Elizabeth? Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Uh. Thirty-four point five. Okay, it's on, uh. Uh, second, uh, second or third.
Are you looking at my version or the one she's corrected?
The one, the corrected version.
Okay. George DeBrol, edits thirty-four point five.
Question I got in there, it says, the city of Lemnster hereby designate the position of principal building clerk to be the official floodplain administrator. We don't have a such person.
We do. Um.
You do?
It's a new, it's a somewhat new position. I mean, not, it's, it's, okay, you've been here a long time, so for you, it would be new. Um, it existed a couple years ago, right before I started working here. Um, the building clerk got promoted to principal building clerk, that's Marina.
Oh, okay.
And that recommendation came from the conservation agent. We already checked with the building administrator to see if that would function well, um, and it, and it does from an administrative point of view, um. In collaborating with those folks.
Okay.
Position.
I, I, I wasn't aware of a principal building clerk.
Yeah, it's somewhat new, John.
Okay. I'll pass them. So the rest of it looked good to me.
And you'll have opportunity once I hammer this away to, to comment on it again. I'm not doing anything radical, I'm really just going with what the city has and what's recommended by the state.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that's always.
Trying to make them, make them, um, a clean copy.
Okay. Uh, so are we setting a meeting for that, or are we just gonna wait?
Uh.
Agenda.
I can put it on the next agenda, whatever that is, it doesn't have to be officially scheduled, so what, later on in the, in the meeting, we're gonna talk about scheduling. Um, and then at that point, it can, I can put it on the next agenda. It'll be ready for the next meeting, whenever that is.
Okay, very good. Six point two, John Chevlin. Parry Corporation.
Jason, is this a relation to you? Do you need to abstain?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I just wondered, I was just wondering.
Which is, which is strange because it's a fairly unusual name.
Jason, are you Paray or Par?
Paray, yep.
All right, we're Par. So there's no relation.
Now, wait a minute, are you still French-Canadian? Maybe you're just saying it wrong.
I, yeah, it is.
Introduce John Chevlin.
Yes. Well, thank you, um, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Elizabeth. Um, so we've been asked just to give an update in regards to the traffic study, so I have about an hour, hour and a half presentation, and then I'll open up for questions.
Hello.
So I'm gonna try to be, you know, as brief as possible, but try to give you enough information so you know what we, uh, have done and what we're, uh, what we've completed, so. Uh, we were asked by, uh, Ashley Whitman and Bingum back in twenty sixteen, uh, towards the end to do a traffic study for the expansion over at the hospital. Uh, I think I was in front of the board, I wanna say it was late winter, early spring of twenty seventeen, presenting our findings from that study, which was dated December, uh, twenty sixteen. Um, you know, part of the study, we, we went and we reviewed North Main Street, and we went basically from Lindell Avenue, Hamilton, uh, Avenue intersection down to Washington Street. And we looked at the significant, uh, intersections within the corridors, so we looked at North Main, um. Uh, with Lindell and Hamilton, and then we looked at North Main with, with, uh. Um, sorry, Water Tower Place, um, and Nelson Street, and then we looked at North Main with the hospital road and the Applebee's driveway, and then North Main with Washington Street. So we looked at that for both capacity and safety, and out here, we didn't feel capacity is gonna be an issue because we didn't feel that the hospital is gonna generate any more traffic than was generated with this, uh, particular type of addition that they have, so the main thing that we wanna do is take a look at the, uh, the safety components of the other roadway and see what could be done for improvements. Um, so we went ahead, we did peek our accounts, we did field reviews, we got crash data for a three-year period. And then we did a safety analysis and broke down the crash data and compare the, the crash rates to the statewide and district three averages. Um. So what we found is that there was some areas that had some, uh, some high rates of crashes, particularly the North Main Street, Lindell Avenue and Hamilton Street. They exceeded both the, the state, uh, statewide average and the district average, uh, for crashes per, per million. Um, so that was razor red flag. We found out when we were doing the study that the state was also at the same time doing a road safety audit of this, uh, of this corridor. Um, and taking a look at, cause they had a couple intersections that were in the two, top two hundred, uh, worst intersections in the state, so they were also looking at the same time. Uh, so we went ahead and in addition to go ahead and looking at the, uh, the crashes, you know, we came up with a lot of safety improvements that could be incorporated, and I'm not gonna go through each one, cause I think each intersection, we had like four recommendations. But I'll summarize them, there was either going ahead and taking a look as far as the traffic phasing and the timings. Or we also had some geometric improvements and, uh, felt like we added in dedicated left turn lanes to get some of the traffic flow out of the, the through moments, that that would help both the safety and the, and the capacity and those issues. So we identified all those improvements, uh, we included those in our report at the time. Uh, we submitted that in regards to things that should be looked at, and, uh, we submitted that. And we presented that to the planning board, as I mentioned before, back in twenty seventeen, um, and looking at the safety. As far as the capacity, we went and we looked, and there were some intersections, again, the same thing, level services seemed to be high at some of the moments, and that came into play as far as our, our recommendations. Uh, we provided that to the planning board back in twenty seventeen, uh, the, the recommendation that came about uh, from the planning board is that they want us to go ahead and once the hospital is open for approximately three years, they wanna come back and do a study to see what impacts the, the hospital renovation improvements had at that time, so. We're asked in April twenty twenty, uh, you know, we finalized the report and we submitted that, uh, I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that when we did the study, we actually did the counts prior to April twenty twenty, uh, so was the counts were actually done, I think it was February twelfth, so it was all pre-COVID, so the volumes that we had went ahead and took into account in regards to the traffic volumes were before they obviously were reduced based on the, the whole pandemic situation. Uh, we, we did a comparison to see what the traffic volumes were, uh, versus what they were before. We found from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, the volumes, uh, actually decreased out on this corridor, um. And that was just during the peak hours, and we looked at both morning and the afternoon, so there was a, you know, a decrease in regards to the overall volumes that were occurring, uh, in these areas. We also went ahead and we took a look at the crash data, and we also compared in regards to, uh, what the crashes were prior to the, uh, the hospital renovation. And again, in twenty twenty, the crash rates did decrease based on what they were in, in, uh, twenty sixteen. You know, whether that was just, you know, perchance, but we did take for the crash data three-year amount of data, uh, for both time periods, uh, just to compare them, and they, they did get reduced. Um, as we were doing that, we, we came, and we looked at, uh, as I mentioned before, the road safety audit, so the DOT did hire a firm to go ahead and do improvements, uh, design improvements for that corridor. Uh, those plans as of December, uh, of twenty nineteen, with the seventy-five percent submission with DOT, and I know when we talked to them in the spring, they're wrapping up their review and they're gonna be proceeding to the ninety percent submission. Uh, but we took a look in regards to the summary of what our safety improvements were, and I think, you know, between the four intersections, uh, I'm sorry, the three intersections, we had, I think almost a dozen, I think we had eleven improvements that we recommended. Uh, so we looked, took a look at the plans that were being developed and all the changes that we recommend that we're incorporating into those plans. Uh, so those, those, uh, those improvements are going into play. We took them in regards to the mitigation and what the impacts will be for what they're actually incorporating into design. You know, and it does show an improvement, not only with the safety based on the design improvements that's gonna be proposed, and but also the improvements as capacity analysis at each of the intersection, so. You know, all in all, that's where we, you know, we stand right now in regards to doing the two studies, coming up with the conclusions. You know, comparing what we did for the traffic data and looking at the volumes and the crash data, um, it shows that the, the numbers were improving. And, you know, we think with the improvements that MS DOT is going through right now, um, you're gonna have a bunch better corridor in this area that's gonna help with the overall traffic flow. That's about in a five, ten-minute, uh, summary, but, um, you know, open for any questions if anybody, anyone's getting to any specifics.
Uh, just, I did have a, uh, do have a copy of those, uh, plans. Uh, we've looked at them. Um. Put in my other hat, it'd be on the Rotary Club. We have the, uh. Uh, the flower plantings on the Washington Square, so the DPW had given me a copy instead of those plants. And, uh. I concur that, uh, all the changes I had, we were looking for, or thought were gonna happen, uh, uh, seem to be in the plan. So.
Yeah, yeah, they seem to make it.
They're making that next. I think they're scheduled next fall.
I, I believe that is true, that is true. And I think, you know, that the quarter two, I think they're trying to improve it for making it more multi-modal, uh, I think they're trying to prove for pedestrians, I know they added bike lanes, it, you know, as you mentioned, they do have landscaped islands in the middle. Uh, which are gonna help slow down traffic, help with some of the turning movements, so I think overall, it'll certainly be, uh, much safer.
And, and John, just a quick question, I mean, overall, what do you think really contributed to the, to the, uh, to, you know, the, it's going down from twenty sixteen to now? I mean, because a lot of the changes haven't been incorporated, right?
Yeah, yeah, and you know, I, I was kinda surprised that the volumes went down. I mean, usually you see some stay steady over the course of, of time, but. You know, I, I think a lot of it, I think things, you know, even before COVID, I think people were, you know, working more remote, uh, I think as they're getting into that, I think people, you know, you got a shopping area here, I think a lot of people are shopping online. You know, it's, it's, uh, it's weird that you see that the traffic volumes would go down, uh, that much, so, but.
Yeah, we lost, uh, uh, you know, one of the, uh.
Lot of stores there.
Lot of talent, yeah.
Yeah, 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 so.
It's interesting, huh? Uh, do you think it's because people are using all, overloading other areas, or?
That, that certainly could be part of it, um, you know, with the, the, the volumes and. That, that certainly could be part of it. Um, you know, with the, the, the volumes and the, and the crashes that were occurring, people could have gone ahead and and gone that way, or they may have avoided during peak hours. You know, our studies are basically based on peak hours. So people made during those times, been trying to, you know, avoid those certain hours. Um, you know, as far as the crashes and, you know, I mean, the single timings and the phases that are, that are out there, uh, they're just very conflicting for all the movements where you had approaching, uh, lanes from each direction. There was causing a lot of angle crashes and a lot of rear-end crashes, cause people were stopping and going, and so I think this is gonna help a lot, cause it's more dedicated for all the movements. So it's gonna help a lot with safety. And they, and they got a lot of geometric improvements too, that they're incorporating, trying to line up the intersections better instead of having them offset, which is gonna help and you know, I think it's a, it's a real good plan. I think Mass DOT is putting out.
Thanks.
And by the way, the the new plan also ties in the rail trail.
Correct.
Built at the same time.
Correct.
That is eyebrow raising, huh? To know that it's, uh, one of the top two hundred most dangerous intersections, and we're gonna start putting bikes through there.
Well, look where the bike lane is at the corner of Merriam-Abraham West. Yeesh, Maple Ave.
It's what it is.
Maple Ave.
It's like, it's right in the middle of the road. Oh, man. I won't ride there.
I will.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't ride bikes.
I, I appreciate the report and, uh, I think that concludes what I, what we had to do with the hospital and its expansion and stuff like that. Um, good to see.
Thank you, John, for the presentation.
Good to see.
Thank you.
Uh, taking on most of your recommendations.
Good, yeah. Thank you for, uh, giving me the opportunity to go ahead and present, and, uh, Elizabeth, if you have any questions, you know, feel free to reach out anytime.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a great holiday. Have a great holiday. Bye-bye.
You too.
Okay, have a good day.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, six point three. Planner Director Elizabeth Wood requests a plan board review. Updated CEO limits the zoning ordinance books before printing, distributing and updating.
Hi.
Do we have, uh, any inputs on there, Carol? What was it? No, I have.
Carol, Jason and Dean.
The two members are gonna look at that.
Working on it. It's so what? Do you never realize how
I have no comments. This is Jason.
Oh, okay.
Jason, you read the whole book and you didn't find a single comment?
I have no comment at this time.
So my, and my point is, there's more in there than you realize when you start reading it from beginning to end. So I'm not ready to make comments.
Do you have partial comments?
Not right now. I, I don't have it in front of me. I, I do.
I'm wondering if the board would like me to go ahead and electronically publish um, the version that I have before the end of the year so that we can get it up. And then any any future edits you can get to me promptly, and then I'll just repost the zoning ordinance. It's easy for me to do. All I have to do is go through our like, we post minutes and agendas all the time. I can easily post the the graph that we have and say that it's pending.
Any final approval?
Yeah. Well, yeah.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't want to?
Carol, I need an input from you on that.
Well, I
We're not printing it yet. We're just.
I just think it's more than just, I think, it's in, I'm, in my frank opinion, I think it's more than just our input. I I'm trying. I mean, we, we can make, I, I think I, I realize it, it, how long ago did we revise the ordinance? I guess my
August.
No, I mean, the, the time, like, how many years ago from when it was?
Two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, seven years ago.
I, I I think, I'm trying to say it's beyond what, uh, we can make like basic changes if that's all we're looking for. I think it needs to be completely revamped, and that's beyond our.
That, that's a whole revision. Right now, you're not supposed to revamp the whole thing. You're supposed to just look for spelling, grammar.
Well, if that's the case, I have, other than the ones that you and I have found so far, I haven't found anything like that.
Okay.
That's why it's been taking me so long. I'm looking at it more.
This is just a tip. You're saying we need an overhaul of our ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, boy. If you can remember back, back in uh, two thousand ten or so, we had, we had hired a company to do that. Uh, they came in with a report. We were primarily looking at, uh, just doing the overlays on West Street, Main Street, Merriam Avenue, Mechanic Street. Uh, we made that report. We got the overlays done. We submitted it to the city council at that time. Certain city councilors said, no, we want, want the whole thing done. Then they proceeded on their own uh, to do it. They hired an individual to make all kinds of changes. He had no planning background whatsoever. They made all those changes and they went to the city council and they were approved by the city council. Okay? There's a lot of errors in there. That it wasn't done properly.
And I, and I'm not talking about type of graphical errors, and I guess.
Yeah, you're talking about content.
I agree with you, Carol. I'm talking about.
That's an easy look for me, which I don't think there's many of. I know we figured out, or you figured out, I can't take any credit. Like the error about business, it being business BA, BA instead of BB, and it wasn't consistent. I was looking at it more comprehensively, that's why. I just think it needs a more of a comprehensive overhaul than just should the word be a the rather than an am. But that's just my opinion. I probably far from right.
For the purposes, if you rewind to the, the task at hand, you've, you've, you've expanded the task at hand into something that wasn't the original task. The original task was just to make sure we integrated all of the amendments that had previously been approved by the board and put them in the document and then have it printed. It wasn't to overhaul the whole ordinance.
Okay, well, that's what I think needs to be done. I mean, we can do this.
We can put that on if the board wants to do that, we can do that as a project for twenty twenty-one. But for the
We can take sections of it and do that. Trying to I think that, I think that's gonna take a separate discussion.
Do you want me to put that on? I can put that on the agenda as a separate discussion. But but right now, we're just trying to get the zoning ordinance published in one piece instead of having amendments, addendums.
Okay.
So I need direction from the board as to what you want to do.
I'll continue doing that then. I, I don't see, I, I mean, I'll, I'll continue doing that, but I that's fine. I just think we need, it needs more than that, but that's fine.
I totally agree with you, Carol, and I think we had to look at that separately. And, uh, I think we're gonna have a discussion of this offline in some place and have a meeting and find out what we're gonna do. I like to find out some of the things that you're finding. Okay. But right now, we, we have a, a book in front of us that has inconsistencies in it. And, uh,
But if it gets
because of issues that were going on. And pretty much all we're looking at it is the retyping of it and the inclusion of amendments that have been made in the last five or six years.
It could be pro, my opinion is, is it could be problematic to put it online right now if, if there are things that have changed that are really gonna affect uh, a decision one way or another, or somebody applying for something one way or another. I mean, that's just my take. I think I, I would rather wait until it's, you know, we have a final review, a final input and then publish it online, because right now, they're going by whatever documents are in place anyway. And we don't want to create confusion or more work for the, the applicants or ourselves in, in the meantime. Um, those are my thoughts. I, I don't know if it's.
So right now, if someone wants, just from a practical matter, from the building inspector's point of view and from staff's point of view, my, my point of view and Stephanie's. If someone wants to do something in solar, they can't go to the zoning book. They've gotta go on the website and look at the addendum. And ima, and imagine it's been integrated into the ordinance. They want to do something with wind and energy, same thing. If they want to do something with, um, uh, deep, what is it? Um, deep pole water. Kristin works on an ordinance. Um, I'm gonna get the wording wrong. Um, anything that's been changed at all since two thousand thirteen is not in the book. If someone goes to look at their hard copy. It, it just needs to be printed. And then worked on.
Well, it's not in the book, but I could just, I could, but I have a, I have a hard copy with the addendums there. What, I mean, what am I, who am I telling? Like, this section should be the, the addendums are there. What, who am I to like, what difference does it make if I say we need to include this addendum? Why, I mean, I guess my question is how isn't that more of a website issue? Can't they just like incorporate all the addendums and make them the next section of the ordinance?
That's what we're trying to do.
That's what they did.
That's what we're trying to do, Carol.
I know, but why, I guess my point is, why does it take the, any of us, including you, Elizabeth, to do that? Why can't, who do we, who, who do we tell, like, we have a new
Yeah, to incorporate these new addendums.
This needs to be added to the ordinance on, on this website. I don't like, I what, what am I writing down that's gonna make a difference that that's gonna happen? I guess that's my point. And maybe I'm making this.
I think you're blowing it into something complicated than it is.
No, but, but I hear what you're saying, Carol. I hear what you're saying. You know, I mean, you know, we have an addendum that we've all agreed upon or, or you know, it's, it's been a change since the original ordinance came out. Why aren't those already incorporated by the people that were responsible for putting it together in the first place? Right?
That's staff, and that's what I did. I was only, I had done an editing of the, I had we contract, so Jason and Dean weren't here when this happened. We contracted out to Southern, or, um,
MRC.
MRPC.
Right.
Montezuma's Original Planning Commission.
Yep.
To do the, to do the grunt work for us. I went through and I reviewed it to make sure they did it properly. I was only asking the board, look at it so that we had another set of eyes besides mine going through and, and, and seeing if it was done properly. That's all I was asking them.
Oh, Elizabeth, so, so the addenda, let me ask you a question. So the addendums that have happened or the changes that have happened since, since it first came out or was published. Did you see those incorporated into the new document that, uh, that MRPC did?
Yes.
I, I'm just, you know, I'm just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I did. And we have like five new ones coming.
Yep.
That the board sent forward to council, and when they come forward, I'd like to also include them into this document. And before we print the books. Or maybe we don't want to print the books. Maybe we want to only have it online until what Carol said, but that's a whole discussion.
Well, with, understanding what my role is, when's our next, our next meeting is the, um, are we having a meeting on the eighteenth? Or
That's on the agenda to discuss whether or not to have a meeting on the twenty.
If it's a matter of semantics rather than comprehension. I mean, I can get that done and send to you, but I don't, you know, and then we can just distribute it. I don't think it's a, it's not frankly, I don't even think we need to put on the agenda. When I have it done, I can give it to you and then we can distribute it to the other members.
Okay.
Yeah. So that doesn't help you answer your question, does it, Elizabeth? You put it online right now as it is, or?
I, if, I wanna, as a goal, when I write my annual report, I want to say that we did this. So I want to have it done by the end of the year. I want to have it, I want to have the online version on on the web. And then if we don't buy the printed books until next year, I'm fine with that.
Why don't we put it on the web? Okay. If Carol finds any, I guess, a type of graphical errors, those can be, those can be changed on the web.
I can change that in a day.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's not go to printed version. Yeah.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna like broadcast it from all the mountaintops that we've got.
Oh, no, no.
Just gonna have it there so that when people ask for it, we can say, here it is.
Yeah, and neither should we have it in printed form right now until everything is, uh, really dissected and, and looked at carefully by Carol, you, I suppose, and John, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, this week, I'll, I'll publish it, and then when Carol gives me her edits, whether it's whenever that is, I will it might be five things, it might be two things. I'll, I'll be able to do that quickly and, and just republish it online.
Exactly.
And then we'll have another discussion later about what to do for the
Can I put it, can I put a big X in that flow chart that's in the middle of the ordinance? About what to do if you're filing something?
Flow chart?
Oh, the flow chart.
See, it's You can't, you can't change zoning without
Well, it's not changing zoning, it's changing this, follow the arrow to this, and follow the arrow to this. See, it's stuff like, like, that, that's where I just don't know. I don't, I'm not, Elizabeth, trust me, I don't be, I'm not trying to be difficult, but it's
Confusing.
It's, there's just a lot to it that I would like to change that, A.
Okay, so why don't, why don't I publish what I have? And then you and I will talk about.
Well, I guess what I'm doing is I'm just looking for typos and, and mistakes, and I'm gonna just have to have the discipline to only make those changes.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm publishing what I have now, and then when you give me your edits, I'll discreetly, I'll tell the board.
We can look at that flow chart.
Just go publish the flow chart.
Okay.
Leave that page blank.
Leave that place.
So we can celebrate then, getting the online version on the web.
Okay, seven point zero.
Yeah.
And Elizabeth, you're ahead of schedule.
That's right.
Seven points, seven point one. Planning Development Directors' Report for December seventh. Ethics.
Great. I'm gonna harp on you, gentlemen.
Uh, you, you know what? I went to do it this morning and, uh, something came up. I promise you, it will be done. You will have it by closing business tomorrow.
And now Dean, you're on my list as well. I know you've probably already done this. You just need to give me your certificate.
I was looking to up before this meeting and I have no internet, so.
There you go.
Well, you, you have some time. Tom, I haven't heard from you.
Tom, he's just being Tom. He was sick. The guy was sick. Leave him alone.
I had COVID.
He had COVID. Leave him alone.
That would have been a good time to do.
I'm gonna use this excuse for a long time.
Hey, he couldn't taste or he couldn't smell, so he couldn't finish it. Leave him alone.
I can, I can tell you guys that, uh, I would be able to complete it very quickly, like, like less than fifteen minutes.
I know, I
It really doesn't take long.
No, I've done it twenty-eight, thirty times, thirty-three times. I know.
All right.
I'm a bad boy. I'm a bad boy. I know. I'm sorry. I, I really am. I
It's nine o'clock.
Too sweet.
Yes. Okay, so I need to know what you want to do. I think I'm fine having a meeting on the twenty-first. I think we could work through floodplain at that meeting. And, um, we don't have any applications. I do have an A and R. I do have an A and R that came in today. Uh, well, it's, it's not final, but I had, I sent it back and had them correct it. Um, but there will be an A and R for that meeting, an A and R and the floodplain. If we have it. I don't know. I don't know if everybody, if we have a quorum, even if we only have five people, if some of you want to take off. Um, I think it'd be worthwhile to have that meeting to do the A and R in the um, the floodplain.
I could be here.
Plane, I'm not worried about.
Yeah, we'll be around, we'll be around. Just have the meeting and uh we'll feel like we've really earned a paycheck this year.
I'm gonna be here. I'm not going anywhere, so.
We can have a fifteen minute. Planning boy Christmas party after that.
That's right.
Would you play some music?
I'll play a couple songs on the piano. How about that?
That's, I'll play them with you.
Hey, Sal, get the guitar out. We'll have a duet.
Well, we'll sit down and we'll figure something out. We'll do.
Now, I I need to look forward as to what we're having in January. There's a holiday. And I don't have my, my. There's um. Art Luther King Day. Do we want a second meeting in January? Do you want to decide that now? We should probably. For scheduling purposes, decide whether or not.
I would say no.
I would say.
Holiday, it's a holiday, yeah.
That's right.
Well, how about instead of the first and the third of the month, we, uh, we already scheduled something for the fourth though. What about the?
Yeah, don't schedule for the fourth.
What about the fourth Monday in January?
Twenty fifth?
No, I can't, I can't do that.
Well, we have eight people. We have a quorum.
I mean, it's the middle of the winter, so we usually are a little late.
And we don't know that we're gonna need it, so I wouldn't add something right now.
You know what? If we need one later on in the month, because there's stuff that comes in, just let us know and we'll.
We'll schedule something.
Okay, it's same for February. It's President's Day on the um.
No, fifteenth, right?
Yeah.
Why don't we do the same thing as Sal suggested? We just see if something comes up and we'll. Special meeting.
Alright, sounds good.
Because we do that anyway.
As long as we have five out of eight.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
It works for me.
Okay.
I had one more thing, but I forgot, so.
One more thing, but I forgot.
One more thing. So never mind.
So, can I, can I just say something quick? Uh, very quick, I just wanted to acknowledge, I don't want to do a moment of silence or anything. I just wanted to acknowledge Greg Angelini.
Yeah, yeah.
And my former boss, who was my mentor as well and.
No.
Uh, agree, very sad.
Yeah, very nice guy, great guy. And, you know.
Can I mention, can I mention one thing too? I saw, I saw your name with a, a new recently published book, so congratulations.
Thank you. That was uh, it was a year ago, but thank you.
No, no, I just saw, but I didn't know that. I just saw it recently.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations to Paul's uh moot court team for.
Thank you again. Yeah.
Did we, did we talk about John's achievement as well?
Which is Friday, right?
Last time.
John's, John's event.
Yes, on Friday. Everybody's welcome.
Oh, it's on Friday.
I've already got my ticket. I'm ready to go.
Where is it?
When I get the link, I can send it out to everybody.
Please send it out, yes.
No, no, you gotta forgive me. I've been kind of busy lately, so I haven't read a lot of my emails.
Okay, I want to thank the, the board members that, you know, inputted to this and the, it was a real surprise and, you know. It was great, you know, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to Friday and uh, you know.
Well, John, despite everything.
Everybody for all the help over the years.
Despite everything, we are proud of you, so congratulations.
You know. I I know Sal, it was, you know, had to write something that was difficult.
It was very difficult, but it was all true. It's all well deserved, so I didn't make any.
Carol wrote something, so, you know, it's good to have a. So thank you all again. I really appreciate it.
And John, you're gonna be roasted, so be ready.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
First and third Monday of the month. Are you kidding?
Great idea.
It took her a year to get that done, more than a year.
I know it.
Are you still recording, Elizabeth?
I, you have an adjournment, so I'm recording.
Melon to adjourn.
Oh, wait, before we get, we're gonna get into the Christmas period here.
Oh, there you go. There you go. John, that's the twenty first.
So I want to ask you.
That's the twenty first.
The meeting with this.
Look like a Viking.
John is an elf.
You got some earwax dribbling out of your left ear.
That motion.
I already made it. I made the motion.
Hey, do you want to be the shortest Portuguese or do you want to be the tallest elf? That's the question.
I think I'm more like a Viking, so. Made it second into a June roco.
Dis and parade.
Yeah.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Patrick Corla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Uh, yes.
Tom Carrigan.
We lost.
Oh, and I have calendars if anybody wants one for the Rotary.
Yeah, yeah, save me one, John.
Doc Chakuni.
Yeah.
Carol.
But I'll do it. I'll pop some off to the office. She can go and see.
John Souza.
Yes.